What?
Okay, that's, that must be new. I never heard that one before.
Yes, no.
Okay, excuse me, welcome everybody to the Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees meeting from May 27th, 2021. Please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance. At a moment of silence for members of our armed forces that gave their lives in the service of our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone.
Well done with the flag, Tim.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we do not have any public hearings this evening, so we'll go right out to public comment on agenda items only. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on an agenda item before we get started? Just give it a moment. We don't have too many people, so. Okay, we look clear on public comment on agenda items, so we'll move on to administrative business. First up is acceptance of minutes. I'm looking for a motion in a second to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held May 13th, 2021.
Make the motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion, motion. Trustee Burak with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I would like, thank you. Approval of abstract. Looking for a motion in a second to approve abstract number 24 containing vouchers 202015 through 202180, totaling $451,228.29.
On the question?
Well.
On the question?
Yes, trustee.
Voucher, I don't have the voucher number in front of me. $48,342 to Warwick Chrysler Jeep Dodge. There were two separate vouchers for that, split in two. What is that vehicle for?
The water department.
Which one?
Yeah, it does.
It's the water sewer vehicle. It's every year we get a new one. It gets ordered in the fall, comes in in the spring.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so we're still looking for a motion in a second.
Motion.
Thank you, trustee Dier for the motion. Trustee Jacomaza for the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would aye. Thank you. Okay, fiscal year 2021, 2022 holiday schedule. Looking for a motion and a second to adopt the holiday schedule for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion.
Second.
Trustee Jacomaza with the second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, would I? Next up in administrative business is an acceptance of resignation and retirement.
What issues?
Sadly, looking for a motion in a second to accept with regrets the resignation and retirement of Gary Thomasberger from the position of building inspector with his last day of work being June 18th, 2021.
Uh-uh.
Remember we say no?
I was answering the same thing to be honest.
I said no.
I think he's gonna leave anyway, so.
Not right.
We can hold the check from him, can't we? Just.
Actually, that's not legal.
Ah. Alright.
I would try to do that.
I guess I'll.
Congrats.
I'm in motion.
Alright, everybody. Nobody wanted to do it. Everyone did it once. I think I saw trustee Graziano first and trustee Dier second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would aye. Just want to note that Gary's been an employee of the village and the town before that since June 1988 and has been an invaluable asset to all that work and live in our community. So we're really gonna miss Gary.
Mm-hmm.
Indeed. Moving on, maybe we should have a moment of silence for that. Moving on, appointments to the planning board and zoning board of appeals, terms from 6/1/2021 to 5/31/2026. Looking for a motion to reappoint Sandy Capriglioni to the planning board with the term of June 1st, 2021 through May 31st, 2026.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, trustee Gomez with the motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Jacomaza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No, would I? Also.
I abstained.
Okay, thank you, Tara. As you know that, I'm sure. Looking for a motion in a second to appoint Evan Yan to the zoning board of appeals with a term of June 1st, 2021 through May 31st, 2026.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Dier with the motion. Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would aye. Next up, we need to discuss, schedule a special meeting for interviews for the building inspector vacancy. So I mean, we need to schedule a special meeting to interview candidates for the building inspector position. We don't know yet how many will apply as the deadline isn't until tomorrow. So we need to figure out when we want to schedule interviews for those that will apply. So I leave it open to the board as to when you'd like to do this. Desiree, before we have that discussion, Desiree, do we have a specific deadline in mind to get these interviews done?
The list is only good for 60 days.
Yeah.
It's dated the day after your last meeting or the Monday after that. I don't have it in front of me, so I couldn't tell you the exact date, but it's only good for 60 days. The position, as you've just made the motion previously, will be vacant as of June 19th.
So we gotta do it before then?
Well, I mean, ideally, you should have somebody in place.
It would be a good idea if we had somebody in place, appointed, ready for our next meeting, which would be just prior to Gary's departure, so we need to do this.
About 12 candidates on the list. I don't know if all will say yes or no. Like the mayor said, the deadline to submit a response to the canvas is tomorrow. We had to give seven days. They went out in the mail last Wednesday, so seven days. We moved to Friday to be safe. So with postmarks and whatnot, I figured by Wednesday we should have everyone that we're gonna have, and then I can let you guys know how many responded in the positive for an interview and then go from there. But we need to set that up because hopefully by your next meeting, you'll be able to make an appointment.
Alright, so I'm looking at my calendar. Monday is obviously Memorial Day. We really would need to do it next week at some point, I would think.
But we have to wait till Wednesday. Didn't you just say that? Yeah.
I would say I would wait till Wednesday to give it opportunity for the postmarked.
Wednesday the second or Wednesday the ninth?
Wednesday the second.
So.
Next Thursday?
That's what I was just thinking. Thursday the third or?
Thursday works for me.
Yeah.
I'm in the Hamptons at a client, so.
Seven through eight?
Better than you.
I wanna go.
No, it's just I don't wanna, I don't wanna commit it, not gonna be home.
The fourth?
Tara or anybody else? Seven through the eighth?
Yeah.
I think I'm good on those days.
Yeah, I'm good.
Tuesday the eighth, you said?
Yeah.
Monday the seventh.
Or Monday the seventh.
The eighth is land preservation, so that doesn't work.
Seven.
Seven, yeah.
Seven?
Seventh.
You're good?
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good. Everybody else? I'm just thinking about what time and where. Do we want to do this in person or do we want to do this via Zoom?
Zoom.
Okay, Zoom, Zoom on the seventh at what time? 6:30?
When? Chris, when are you gonna be in? 6:30?
It's, yeah, you can do it at 6:30. I get, I get when I get.
Yep, 6:30 then.
Okay, so then I'm looking for a motion in a second to schedule a special meeting to be held on Monday, June 7th, 2021 at 6:30 PM to interview candidates for the building inspector position.
Sounds good. Oh, I make the.
Trustee Gomez for the, I was taking it as a motion. Trustee Dier with the second. Any discussion? Any further discussion?
How many minutes do you want each interview to be for?
I guess it really depends on, you know, I, I don't think we can do these in 15 minutes. I think we're gonna be, I would say 30 minutes. I can't imagine, maybe 20? I don't know. It really depends on how many people are gonna apply. We don't really even know that yet.
Can we wait till they respond and see how many candidates we have and then go from there with the amounts?
Well, we're not gonna have another meeting prior to when we want to appoint them, so what I would say is let's schedule 20-minute interviews. If there's only a small number of people, we can stretch that timeout. I don't know, that might not work either, though.
So maybe can I suggest that maybe, maybe set up a second date as a overflow in case all 12 do respond?
12?
That's just as a recommendation.
I totally agree. I think that's a great idea and what about the?
About that Wednesday.
I was just gonna say the same thing. Do we have ZB8? I don't think so, no.
The men's, the men's club is having a meeting.
There's ZB8 that night, isn't there?
Is there?
Second Wednesday?
Yeah, you're right. I don't have it on my calendar yet, but yeah, that would be the second Wednesday.
You, can you not use it to Zoom for two different meetings?
Hmm, oh, I guess so. I don't know, actually.
I, I have a, you created an account for me. Why can't we use mine?
Yeah, we could.
The 10th?
Yeah.
So let's put ZB8 aside, let's put men's club aside. Can everybody make it on the 9th if we need to as a, as a backup for the 7th?
Yes.
We may not even need it.
Yes.
I'll do my best.
Can anybody not make it on the 9th? Let's ask the question in a different way.
So it has to be before the 10th we have this?
Well, ideally, the 10th would be when you make the appointment of the individual.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, you wouldn't be able to do it till the 24th. And that would mean that you would not have a building inspector place. And then you have to assume that the person that you hire can start right away, too, so.
Even if we don't have one same place until after, doesn't John still cover as the assistant, whatever he is now?
Yeah, but my understanding is there are certain things as the assistant he's unable to do.
Signature.
It's only gonna be for a week, right?
Well, you're assuming that whoever you hire can start immediately, too.
Well, yeah. We can push off whatever we need to then, I think. Is that critical?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know how the, you know, how the office operates. I wouldn't be able to answer that question for you.
Are, are we saying we can't make it on the 9th as a backup date for overflow or? That's what we're stuck on right now. Can we, can anyone not make it on the 9th if we need a second night? Okay, then let's, let's, let's use the 9th as a second date for overflow in the event that we have more than four? I don't know, every 20 minutes to four, every 30 minutes to four? I think the building inspector, we're probably gonna wanna talk to for more than 20 minutes. I, I just, that's my gut. But that's my thought. Does anybody have any thoughts on this?
Can we make it a half hour earlier? That way we can make it to the other meeting in case we do have it?
You mean?
Work schedules.
Oh, yeah.
I could personally do it at 5:30, yeah, but I kinda doubt anybody else could. I don't know.
No, that's fine.
And I do need to nail down how many minutes you want me to set it for, so I'm, you know, since I book them, so.
Yeah, we're good. Then make it 6:30, 20 minutes.
6:30 on Wednesday, the 9th for a second that debates. How many minutes long would you like the interviews to be, guys? I'm suggesting 30. Like, I, I wouldn't go any less than 20, in my opinion.
Up to you guys.
I think we're gonna need 30.
I agree. Alright, so 30-minute intervals. Starting at 6:30, Desiree, we'll, we'll let you use your judgment with regard to how many you'll schedule on each night. If we can squeeze them all into Monday, I think that's everybody's preference.
Well, if they get all 12, that's six hours.
That's what, but that's.
Yeah.
We certainly don't wanna do six hours of interviews on Monday evening, so.
Right. Okay.
Well, we'll coordinate, but we have that as an overflow date. Alright?
Sure.
Everybody good with that?
So you're just amending the, you're amending the motion to include June 9th as well?
Correct.
Got it.
I don't, I can't remember a time before we started discussing this. Did we have a motion in the second?
You did. You have a motion in the second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Relevy of previous exempted properties. I'm looking for a motion in the second to adopt the resolution protected by the village clerk to relevy a prorated tax amount due on properties located at various locations that were previously eligible for an exemption.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, trustee Graziano with, or trustee Giacomoza with the motion. Trustee Graziano with it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would aye. Thank you. Moving on to old business. Further discussion for realignment of Turner Road Courtyard by Marriott. So this is the third meeting this issue is being discussed by us. At the last meeting, the village board raised some questions and issues that required input from attorney Norton. So at this point, I would like to give the opportunity, and I believe it was Jesus and Tara that had questions that needed answering by Kelly, if I'm not mistaken. I could be wrong on that. Does anybody have any questions of counsel that they need the answers to before we can move on this?
That's good, cuz I don't remember what the questions were. But I can tell you that.
That's partly cuz you weren't there.
Yeah, I did speak with the, with Rick and understand to, the, the application was on the planning board meeting agenda at the last meeting, and so they are looking to see what this board's position is. If you, you're obviously, you're not voting on anything right now. It's more of, I like to call a head nod, but it's whether or not the board is favorably disposed to the presentation that was made with regard to changing and realigning Turner Road. There is a map that was out there. I don't know, Tim, if you have it or not to share, but it showed a green section that was land that would be that would be given to the village to realign the road. And I know that there was some other discussion about the location of the light and that that may have to be worked out with the DOT because they, the planning board mentioned not wanting Turner Road to end up being a cut through to kind of cut around the light. So I think that's something that you can get involved with the DOT with, but the planning board is just looking to see whether or not this application should be proceeding in this fashion or should, you know, go back to Turner Road how it is. So they're looking to know whether or not, like I said, the board is favorably disposed or not to the proposed realignment of Turner Road. I don't know if anybody had any questions for me or?
Pretty sure they did, but I don't, it's there was a lot of discussion that night.
Yeah, I think, I think afterwards I had addressed some questions. I remember Tara had some.
Yeah, I addressed mine.
Okay. And certainly, if anybody has any others, you can let me know. But I know that that's what the planning board is, is looking for.
Well, what I, what I had planned on looking, on seeking this evening was a motion to confirm that proceeding, that proceeding with the realignment of Turner Road is acceptable to us as a board. So nothing more concrete than that, but you know, we need to be able to give the planning board a guidance that we're okay with this, so that they can proceed. And I think that's what the applicant's looking for and, you know, we've had several meetings now. We've had a lot of discussion.
So I guess if I could help and if the board doesn't want, this is a motion, I would say, somebody would move acknowledge that the board is, I like this phrase apparently, is favorably disposed to the realignment of Turner Road as presented to proceed in front of the planning board.
Well, would that give Kelly, in your opinion, the planning board enough to move forward?
I think it would.
To us, okay.
They're, they're looking to you to give them direction. You can't take action on it. Nothing is, you know, but they want direction. If, if the board isn't interested in this, the project will go a different way. So they're just looking so that they review it properly.
Well, I, I think we've had enough input. I think we've had enough presentation by the applicant. We've had enough input from council. We've had enough discussion on this to be able to make a decision as to whether or not we're willing to proceed with this moving forward. I think it's, it's in, I, I think the right thing to do at this point is to provide guidance to the planning board one way or another. I don't wanna leave them hanging forever on this, so. I think it's appropriate for us to make that decision at this point. But again, I open it up to the board for comments, discussion, questions, anything.
So are we voting on this or are we just, that head nod thing just throws me off?
So what I'm seeking.
How are we proceeding with this?
You're, you're basically voting to give a head nod. I know, that sounds confusing cuz you can't officially take action. The, the road, those, those land areas are not currently being offered to you, so you don't really have anything to accept, to move forward on. You're giving, your motion is to give direction to the planning board. It's whether you like this as it's proposed or not. But you can't formally take action because you don't have any legal documents before you to take action on.
How do we phrase a motion? How do we phrase a motion?
What I was.
Not a motion.
I wrote down what Kelly said. Would you like me to read it back?
Go ahead.
Okay, she wants, she said, she suggested that the motion be to acknowledge the board is favorably disposed to the realignment of Turner Road as presented to proceed in front of the planning board.
Yeah.
That would be what the motion is.
And Kelly.
So if we're not happy with, hold on. So if we're not happy the way they're presenting it, they would have to go back to the drawing board and give us a different direction in which to go to.
Well, they would, yeah, they would go back to the drawing board. It wouldn't get realigned. The DOT may or may not be involved and the, the, the planning board wouldn't be reviewing it, you know, traffic-wise and things like that. With it being realigned, it would be reviewing it as the road is today, so.
Hmm, okay, well. And they want us to give them the right of way on New York State Route 32?
Will you, no, so they're gonna be giving you property for the realigned. I wonder if I can share my screen.
You know what, Kelly, just shoot me the, you know what?
Okay, let me just send it to you really quick.
It was in the packet, but I only had the black and white version. I didn't have.
I can't read anything.
Sorry, that's. Yeah.
It just come out so grainy, it's hard.
Yeah. Cuz he sent it in two separate emails, so in order for me to combine it into one, I had to print it and scan it, and we don't have a color printer, so.
Here you go, Tim. I'm sending it right now.
Alright, thanks. I was just looking up Steve's emails, but I'll just say for yours, that would be easier.
But 32 is the county road, correct?
State.
State road.
State road.
State road, I mean, yes, they wrote.
Yeah.
So.
They're not asking for 32.
Oh.
Yeah, no, there's just, so the map that Tim will put up will show this green section, and that would be given to the village as part of its right of way and road that it would be responsible for maintaining. Instead of going up and wide, it goes up and over. That's it.
Hmm.
So that green portion is what would be provided to the village, and it would curve to the left. So there's a little piece that's in red that's just to the left of that. That's actually part of Turner Road right now. So it makes it look a little confusing with the red and the boundary line, but that still is the villages, that red portion, because it's part of Turner Road now. So, but the part that would be given to the village is the green section.
And what's the benefit of taking on the green section?
Well, eventually, if, if, so you maintain Turner Road now, and so it's a village road now. You would still be doing that, and the benefit is that you would be properly maintaining, you know, an aspect of the road, not lifting the plow up and going over this part. But once you maintain it for a certain period of time, it becomes yours anyway. That's, it also cleans up the maps. I'm, I'm trying to remember if you were on one of the boards when we used to do this, but a lot of times properties own to midway through the streets, and so what we try and do for the planning board is have those right of ways from the middle of the street to the edge of the right of way dedicated to the village, so that it cleans it up, so that it's very clear as to what is the villages and what is not. We do try and do that, so for part of this, we did the other side of Turner Road for the success martial arts at one point, so that was transferred to the village. This is just on the other side. And then the, the benefit is really just cleaning it up for the future going forward. But then the other benefit is.
It's been explained before.
Yeah, the other benefit is, is, you know, the alignment and whether you like the realignment for safety purposes and things like that.
Which the DOT has already weighed in on.
The DOT has already weighed in on it. They are in favor of it. Without this project, they probably wouldn't be doing it. So they're, you know, in favor of it at this point.
Oh, wait, okay.
They're in favor of it because of the project.
Well, yeah, because it wouldn't have come up if it wasn't for the project.
They're in favor of the realignment in general, and the project is the impetus to bring it to the table.
Yes.
They're not in favor of it because of the project. They're in favor of the realignment. And the project is what's bringing this realignment to the table to be possible.
That is a better way to phrase it.
Okay. So there is no
I don't see any downside here. I'm not clear on what the concerns are at this point. But I'd love to discuss it.
Concerns, if you improve it, realign it, I think it, and I know there's talks of a traffic light going somewhere. I, I don't like that. We don't know where the traffic light is going. You feel like that's a big, big question.
That intersection, isn't it?
Now, Oakland, Oakland, and then the other one was at the intersection, one or, or both possibly?
Right, so then the, my question and my concern is if you put a traffic light in there, you're improving Turner Road, that's gonna be a new cut through for people to avoid the light. And you have, you have residences there. I, I, I just don't like that people's houses are still there. It's not that the project is taking over all of the residential properties, and if I live there, I wouldn't be in favor of that.
So they would have the opportunity to come out of the public hearing to.
But, but that's after we would decide, which doesn't sit well with me.
That's after we would decide that we, that we see this as favorable for prior to any planning board public hearings on any of those projects.
Right, and it would be prior to you taking, you know, any formal action to accept. And I think, too, if that's a, if that's a concern of the board, I'm just looking to see if Rich or Phil are on. Your traffic consultants, as, as well as Rob and Tim can always write to the DOT and let them know your position of where you would prefer the light and give them the basis for that. That's certainly something that you, you have within your, your authority.
Hmm. So all we, all we wanna give them direction on is whether we accept this that has been proposed right in front of us.
The realignment.
The realignment, no alternative? So if we say we want a different alternative, then they would have to go back and give us a different choice besides this one?
No, they would just likely not give a different alternative and just keep Turner Road as it is.
The way it's set up now.
Yeah, so they're just looking, I mean, you could, you could say you're favorably disposed if the light was located at this intersection. You, you could, you know, tailor that to however you want. It's just that the planning board is looking for direction to see if this is something straightening out the road to have it be perpendicular to Route 32 instead of that very wide intersection, if that's something that you prefer. I mean, I don't know if, if the board has any more questions. Tim, you might wanna just poll the board, and then, I don't know.
Individually to see if they have questions?
Yeah.
I would.
Okay, trustee Gomez, do you have any further questions?
Oh, I don't know, like.
Thank you, pardon?
Not right now.
Okay, trustee Dier.
I'm looking at this, the way it's cut.
One of the questions Jesus had that I don't recall being answered last week was something about the turn lane. How are you getting into
Oh, yeah, the two.
Into this, into, onto Turner Road into the hotel? If you're coming from Cornwall.
Southbound, yeah. That was, that was brought up at the, at the planning board meeting.
And it was a Jesus question that wasn't answered, and that's a, that's a big.
That's.
There's a turn lane right here, no?
Yeah, but how is that? How are you getting that turn lane? Right now it's a two-lane road. So what do you want? You widening it?
They would, they would have to be widening it.
What are they taking over in order to widen the, the SMA property?
No, it appears that they're actually taking over part of the courtyard property. If you look at the red line. So the existing property line is the blue line. So the existing property line is the blue line that goes all the way all across the road. So the red line would be where they're, the new property line would be where they're cutting into the property.
And for how long does that road stay wide? Because then you're gonna have a bottleneck. I know I'm not traffic consultant, but if we're making, the distance, how long of a distance would it be? Is it gonna be three cars?
Right from here.
Okay, and how many?
Instead, based on what I see on the map there, that's what it looks like, because it starts to open up right here and drops into a, a third lane here. Then that continues here, I guess, as a.
Yeah, and those, those are all things that the planning board's gonna be looking at as far as traffic.
Right, but I think from our perspective, we all live here. We know what traffic is like over here. You have two hotels, a beer world, and a hill. I don't think that's ideal, so I know you're saying it's standard, but I don't think it's a standard benefit for the village.
I'm not sure, quite frankly, that we should be delving this deeply into all of these issues, because that is the function of the planning board. Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong. It, it, our, our role is somewhat narrow in that we have to decide whether or not we'll accept dedication of that property. That, that's what we have to focus on.
That's really what's before you right now, as to whether you thi- again, whether you think the realignment is a good idea. The planning board is gonna study the traffic impacts of all of those projects. They're currently permitted under your zoning in those locations subject to regulation, so it's really, they're gonna be looking at, at all of that, and they look at the, the length of turning lanes and everything else. What's really before you is if you like the realignment. If you don't, the road will likely stay how it is, and those businesses could likely come in like that. So it's whether you think that this realignment is good, or whether you want it to just be as wide as it is now.
Alright, so we were, we were going board member by board member, so Tara, I just wanna make sure that.
I'm good, no, no questions.
Well, I kinda got it answered to a certain extent, um, with the southbound traffic there, because uh, it was a topic of large discussion with the planning board meeting. Question is, with that traffic coming southbound, how is that gonna affect Turner Road? Isn't that an emergency access road for the commons?
It is.
Gonna create, is that gonna create more problems over there for emergency vehicles and whatnot?
So what, what has been said before the planning board is that, I mean, that's not open. Nobody's gonna be able to cut through there to get into Woodbury Common. That's only for emergency access vehicles, but that was the concern about the, the light as to where the light is located and would that then, you know, if there's a light that, at that location, it might make it easier for emergency vehicles, should they need to access in that direction. But again, I leave that to the traffic experts, um, but I just, that, that was something that had come up and was discussed with the planning board. And it's still being discussed, actually.
Can I, can I bring, um, Chief Prizzillo into the conversation with that, with the emergency vehicles there? Chief Prizzillo, do you wanna weigh in on that?
I think he's in the meeting now.
Yeah, I think he is.
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, I'm here. As far as the Turner Road with the, the hotel, what you guys are talking about? I, I think no matter, you know, with the plan that we've been viewing and viewing right now, um, that emergency access road is extremely difficult for us to utilize as an emergency access road right now today. So if you start adding houses, businesses, hotels, whatever it might be, it's, it's only gonna get worse.
Well, we understand that part, but the businesses are permitted to be there and they are permitted to be developed. So, Trustee Jacomazza can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think he's wondering what your thoughts are on the realignment of, of Turner Road.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna work. As, as far as emergency access for us getting, you know, getting emergency vehicles in and out of that road, you know, I don't think it's gonna work at all with, with that, you know, with what, you're referring to what we're looking at right now, correct? Yeah, it's, um, I just think you, it's just, it's a recipe for disaster as far as, you know, parking, rubbernecking, gridlock, people backing up, making U-turns, you're drawing attention, you know, and opening up an intersection on, you know, a road that, an emergency access road, maybe a hundred and fifty yards down from where we gain access, and we can't even necessarily go any further, because sometimes we have trouble just getting to Turner Road alone, never mind getting down Turner Road. So it's, it's just, it's gonna complicate things a lot. You know, the, the commons overflow, you know, alone, and, you know, I would say that, you know, the hotel would probably be, you know, to full capacity during any major event or function going on. The commons overflow, you know, backs up into Central Valley, so just for us to get to Turner Road, and you do have corporate drive where we can kinda shoot down corporate drive just after the gas station. Again, though, that's, we have a hard enough time just getting to Turner Road, never mind getting another hundred yards down the road.
Hey, Pat, this is Chris, uh, Pat, this is Chris. Isn't the other alternative is to leave that thing wide open. To us, it's no different. This doesn't, this doesn't matter to us at all, in my opinion. We can, we, we don't use that access almost any time except for Black Friday anyway. In my opinion, so I don't see how this is a bad thing. I mean, otherwise, the other option is to leave that thing seventy-five feet of pavement at Route thirty-two, which to get out of there in a, in a vehicle is a disaster. To take a right out of there, once we're done with a call, is crazy. This at least would channelize it and make things, you know, m- cleaner. I mean, the things you're talking about are still valid, but those are down the road. That's my opinion.
Alright, I, I think. Well, Andrew, do you have any further questions?
Just, oh, Kelly, what about the, what else is going on on corporate drive? Don't mind me, I'm like doing two things at once here, and the dog is screaming. Um, what's going on in corporate drive with the construction over there? Is that gonna affect any of this that we're talking about here? Because there are projects either in development or have been approved for development over there?
Yeah, I think it's the Silverstein. I could be wrong. It's one of the ones that starts with an S. That's happening over on corporate drive, um. I don't think that that would really be impacted by this. Obviously, the ones that would really be impacted by this would be the two hotels and the Beer World. Those are the potential projects that are currently pending. Um, but again, there, there uses that are, are currently permitted under your code to be in these locations, so it's really just, I mean, the, the traffic counts will be studied for each of those projects as well as turning radiuses, um, truck turning, things like that. Those are all gonna be considered for those three big projects. Um, I don't know that the road realignment would impact the projects at all on corporate drive.
I'm good.
Okay, so, uh, I think it's time to call the question, um, so I'm gonna stop sharing this. So I'm gonna be looking for a motion in a second.
Did you ask CJ if he had any comments? I'm sorry.
CJ, did we not do you?
No, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good.
My apologies, I thought we did. Uh, okay, so I'll be looking for a motion in a second to confirm that the Board of Trustees is, what was the term, what was the phrase again? I had it in my head a minute ago. Favorably disposed to proceed with the realignment of Turner.
It's a good phrase, right?
No, it's a great.
Oh, yeah, it's great.
No, I'm looking for that motion in a second. No, but.
Well, you could also then say not favorably disposed.
I'll make that motion. Not favorably disposed.
Okay, so, Trustee Jacomazza is making a motion to state that we are not favorably disposed to proceeding with the realignment of Turner Road. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Trustee Graziano with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, moving on, new business. Introductory local law number seven. Uh, we have several motions that we need to make, uh, for this introductory local law. First off, I'm gonna be looking for a motion in a second to introduce introductory local law seven of twenty-twenty-one, which will amend chapter three-ten zoning of the village code to provide regulations for gathering.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Graziano and.
I'll second it.
Trustee Jacomazza with a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Next, I need a motion in a second to assume the village board is lead agency under secret for this action. Trustee Gomez with the motion, Trustee Buick with the second. Any discussion? Sorry, that was my computer. Uh, next, I'm looking for a motion in a second to type this action as a type-one action under secret.
I'll make that motion.
Jacomazza with the motion. Trustee Buick with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Before we move on to a next deck, uh, I just wanna read a brief excerpt of the description of this action, so that we could discuss the EAF and answer, uh, excuse me, ask any questions of Kelly, uh, prior to moving forward with the negative declaration. So the purpose of this local law is to address the need for a new use and additional flexibility in managing residential properties for gatherings of people in residences, otherwise known as gatherings. The Board of Trustees is aware that it is required to accommodate for a variety of users while balancing the speed to maintain public safety. The proposed regulations are intended to apply to gatherings of people wishing to meet regularly in a residence for purpose other than the usual family functions of celebrating birthdays and holidays. The existing minimum bulk requirements for places of assembly, yard, and setback restrictions and parking requirements are difficult to meet for most residences intended to be used for small gatherings. This local law is not intended to restrict family functions to celebrate birthdays and holidays, et cetera, but rather provides procedures that will conform to current New York State Uniform Code requirements for places where either organizations, associations, or loose affiliations of like-minded people uh, plan to meet or conduct functions of other activities while permitting the review of the specific details of an app, no, excuse me. Oh, I got that right. While permitting the review of the specific details of an application to the village planning board for determination of the occupancy requirements required parking, as well as a general assessment of the suitability of the proposed activity for particular locations. So that's added to EAF, and I just wanted to make sure I brought that up and made sure the board uh, had an opportunity to hear that here at this meeting, was fully aware of that, and give the board the opportunity to ask any questions uh, of council while we're discussing this issue prior to, uh, assuming a negative declaration. Anybody? Kelly, do you have any thoughts on this before we move on?
Um, I just wanted to comment that that, it was extremely detailed and really trying to address the, the core issue that the board was looking for. Um, and from an environmental standpoint as well, so I'm glad. You guys don't have any questions, but if you do, I'm here for it.
Okay, uh, then, with nothing further, I'm looking for a motion in a second to issue a negative declaration for this action of the secret.
I'll make that motion.
So Trustee Jacomazza with the motion, Trustee Buick with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Now I'm looking for a motion in a second to refer the local law to the planning board, the building department, and the Orange County Planning Department for comments.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion, Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Finally, on this one, I'm looking for a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held on June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one at seven-thirty PM to entertain public comment on introductory local law seven of twenty-twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gomez with the motion. Buick with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, so now we're up to introductory local law eight, sign re- sign law revision. Uh, so this introductory local law is, as we all know, to review and amend the sign law. Uh, primarily, in my opinion, with the intent of allowing the use of multicolored logos of different companies throughout town, as well as taking a, a closer look at the sign law and just making it a little bit more updated. So first, I'm looking for a motion in a second to introduce introductory local law eight of twenty-twenty-one, which will amend chapter three-ten zoning of the village code. Section three-ten dash thirty D-one E, sign law regulations.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Jacomazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Looking for a motion in a second to assume the village board is lead agency under secret for this action.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion. Trustee Buick with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Looking for a motion in a second to type this action as type-one under secret.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gomez with the motion, Trustee Jacomazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Just like before, before we move on to a next deck, I'd like to give the board the opportunity to ask council any questions that they might have with regard to this new local law. I'm looking for a motion in a second to issue a negative declaration to this action under secret. Motion, Trustee Graziano with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Now I'm looking for a motion in a second to refer the local law to the planning board, the building department, and the Orange County Planning Department for comment.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gomez with the motion, Trustee Jacomazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, I sense for motions on local laws. Next up, we need a public hearing. There isn't, we're not.
Yeah, public hearing for that one now.
Alright. Need a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held on June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one at seven-thirty PM to entertain public comment on introductory local law eight of twenty-twenty-one. Trustee Buick with the motion, Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Now we're done with that. Now I need to schedule a public hearing for the franchise agreement, the cable franchise agreement. Uh, so I'm looking for a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held at seven-thirty PM on June tenth, twenty-twenty-one to consider a pro- proposed non-exclusive cable television franchise agreement between the village and Cable Vision of Wapod Just Falls, Inc., only owned subsidiary of Altis USA.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomazza for the motion. Trustee Buick with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Alright, next up, we need to return a water booster bond. A request has been received from William Broski requesting the return of the bond that was posted for the water booster at the Woodbury Junction, also known as WP Free Development. Correspondence has been received from the building department and village engineer stating they agree the bond can be returned. I'm looking for a motion in a second to return the bond as recommended.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Trustee Jacomazza for the motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Graziano for the second. Any discussion? All in favor? We have an extra item this evening. Uh, we need to approve a ZBA attorney appointment. So the board, as we all know, conducted an RFP for a zoning board of appeals attorney, and only one firm submitted a proposal. A letter was received from ZBA Chair Karen Unger requesting that the board approve the appointment of Burke, Millie, Golden, and Norton LLP. So I'm looking for a motion in a second to appoint Kelly Norton and the law firm Burke, Millie, Golden, and Norton LLP as attorney for the zoning board of appeals.
Hey, who's this Kelly person?
I don't know, some, some woman. Was that a motion? I saw a motion from Trustee Buick. Can I have a second?
My second.
Okay, Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Congrats, Kelly.
Thank you.
Well worked, Kelly.
That was surprising. You threw that on there to, to throw me, didn't you?
You did. That was our goal. For regular business, so at this point, we'll move out to the public for comment prior to board member comment.
Tim, I just wanna remind the board that that appointment plus the two you did earlier today will also appear on your reorg in June. As the ZBA meets and the planning board meets prior to your meeting, we had to do it now to.
Okay, thank you for that, guys. Anyone on the public have anything they'd like to say?
I do.
Sandy, go.
I'd like to thank the board for having faith in me and, and reappointing me to the planning board for another five years. Um, I'd like to thank the boards for having faith in me and and reappointing me to the planning board for another five years. Um, I also, I I just want to say thank you to Gary. Um, I know I've kind of been a pain in his side for. For several years, uh, with all my questions, and I just want to thank him. I mean, he always, he's very prompt in getting back to me. And actually, you know, putting up with. With my confusion and and going on and on about things. Um, but I do, I wish him a a great retirement wherever he lands. I know he'll. He'll do good things, so that's it.
Thank you, Sandy, and thank you for reapplying. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, Craig Craig Brady has his hand up. Craig, go.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a topic that I haven't heard anything about that's. Been on the minds of a lot of residents, uh, over time that haven't heard anything about lately is the state or status. Of the litigation between the town and village and wondering if there's any update on that.
Yeah, we can tell you that it's done. Uh, we signed the deeds. Uh, all the documents have been signed, the payments been made to the town. I don't think there's anything missing on that, right, Kelly?
So I can give a good update.
Well, better than that, please, go ahead.
Tim has signed the deeds, yes. Um, the one deed has been forwarded to the town for their signature and filing with. Um, Orange County Clerk's Office. Then the second deed we have signed but can't be filed. Until the map is filed and actually at the June third meeting. The subdivision application is pending before the village planning board. Um, it's the two lot subdivision by the highway piece of property. That was part of the settlement agreement, but it does have to go to the planning board to have a properly approved plat. So the application's been made and it's going to be before the planning board on Wednesday.
Ellie, was there a reason they gave for why this has taken so long? There was such a rush to get it done before the election. And then we sat on it for six months, seven months. So was there a reason given why this has taken so long?
It's been some lack of communication.
Okay.
We'll go with that.
Okay. It's the kind way to put it.
But we're almost.
But we're we're almost there.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, and and we're we're following up frequently. It it's a little awkward to submit. You know, to Maria, hey, I've got a planning board application, need this on the agenda, so. We appreciate if Chris is on him listing it on the next agenda.
Okay. Uh, Craig, will you go?
Thank you for that update, very good news, appreciate it.
You're welcome, sir. Anyone else?
Problem.
Okay. We'll move on to board member comment. Um, so first, uh, I want to bring everybody up to speed. Uh, on the water supply issue that we recently had. Uh, so one of our high producing wells was that was due for maintenance since yield rates from the well had been declining. The contractor was hired to pull and redevelop the well, which was scheduled to be completed prior to the start of the summer. This work began the last week of April on time. Uh, and the job was originally estimated to take a week, and then the process reinstalling, sanitizing and laboratory testing the well would begin. With the goal of putting the well back in service before the middle of May. Unfortunately, as the well was being redeveloped, the contractor informed the water department that the well required further work. To remove excessive sediment which had built been built up much greater than anticipated. That extra work was scheduled and completed the week of May sixteenth. Thursday, May twentieth, a sharp decline was noticed in water tank levels in the village. Coinciding with mu- much warmer outdoor temperatures and a lack of rainwater. The declining trend continued ramping up into last weekend, and several water tanks were approaching their set points for low level, which can lead to decreases in water pressure throughout the system. The water department closely monitors the situation, adjusting pumps as needed to distribute water to the system. Our water department staff investigated the possibility of a water leak, however, no problems were discovered. At this point, the water administrator then asked village residents to begin conserving water. Two days ago on May twenty fifth, the contractor finished work on the well and began putting the well back in service. Yesterday, with the approval of the health department, the well began pumping again, and the process of filling the water tanks was underway. The levels are increasing as expected, although it'll take just a little bit more time to build the system back up to normal levels. As a result, restrictions will remain in effect for a few more days. Shouldn't be any further than through the weekend. Uh, moving on, uh, I'd like to take a moment to recognize Memorial Day coming this Monday. Memorial Day is a federal holiday in the U S for honoring and mourning the military personnel who have died in the performance of their duties while serving in the United States Armed Forces. Please take a moment this week and to think about the ultimate sacrifice paid by Americans to protect the freedoms we all enjoy. The Memorial Day Parade kicks off at one P M on Sunday, starting at Bond Street, moving north up Route thirty two, so we hope to see you there. Thank you, that's all I have. Uh, trustee Graziano.
Okay, thank you, good evening. Thank you, everybody, for attending. My comments might be a bit long tonight, surprise, surprise, so everybody just bear with me. Um, so I'm gonna start with, um, I for one, glad to see the COVID numbers retreating as fast as they have. When looking at today's numbers on on the state website, I just noticed that we as a county have finally dropped. Below the one percent rate, and this is a fantastic accomplishment. With the availability of vaccines and our diligence with social distancing and mask wearing during the height of this pandemic. We can now start to return to some semblance of normal. The restrictions are being relaxed, and I for one cannot wait to have a barbecue with family and friends again. Speaking of family and friends, as a parent of a graduating senior, as Andrew is as well. I am so thankful that the kids are going to be able to graduate together in a close to normal ceremony this year. While we as adults may complain about masks and moan about activities. But our children are the ones that have actually borne the brunt of this pandemic. They have been ripped out of their social constructs and thrown into an electronic world devoid of social interaction with strange new world rules and regulations. So to have just a little bit of normalcy restored is a wonderful thing for our children. Continuing down my theme of normalcy and getting our lives back on track, I would also like to thank the many volunteers who participated in cleaning up multiple places around Woodbury this past week. It truly warmed my heart to see so many people from so many different walks of life working together and taking so much pride in our community. This sense of community and caring is what made our family fall in love with Woodbury and reinvigorates all of us to do more. Kudos and thanks to you all. You all deserve a round of applause from the rest of us. Next, I want to do, I also want to say a few things about about the water, and I'm gonna go into this. Um, there's been a lot of misinformation out there, especially on social media, and I'm telling, and there's there's been a bunch of really disgusting comments which I'm not going to get into. But I want to assure you that this group of trustees has been carefully looking at these issues very, very closely. While to me, it's usually lolsome to say the word I in any context whatsoever. In this case, I will make an exception, as this is my line of work and an area of expertise. I personally ask for studies to be performed looking at our infrastructure. And I'm fully involved in working through them to ensure that this infrastructure is sound and plentiful for our future generations. This is not something that is simple, nor can it be accomplished overnight. It will take some time, patience from all of us to get to where we need to be and where we need to go. Rest assured, this is a priority for us, and the projects will be identified and the work will progress. That being said, as transparency is also a huge part of the very essence of this board, I do have to tell you all as well that the water rates we pay will need to increase. This is a fact, and there cannot be proper investment in infrastructure without the revenue to pay for the work. Bonds will be need to be taken, and water rates will need to rise commensurate with a system that works for us all. I will provide more information as I can, and I will also try and correct them in misinformation that has permeated social media lately. But believe me, we are in front of this and have already begun the necessary steps to improve these systems. And lastly, I wanted to leave you with this, my friends and neighbors. The men and women of our water department are some of the hardest working and professional people I've had the pleasure to work with. Just because it may be a mechanical or some other issue, please don't take this out on these fine men and women. They are working hard to serve you. Remember, they are the ones who are out there at two A M. In freezing temperatures fixing a pipe so you can wake up to a hot shower. They're the ones literally in the trenches so you or your family member can go to the sink in the middle of the night and pour a glass of water without a second thought. So please treat them with kindness and respect as they are working for you and are doing a great job. So good night, Woodbury, stay healthy, and remember to be kind to your fellow people. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Trustee Gomez.
Um, I think C J covered it all. Um, thank you all for coming out tonight. Uh, I just want to take. A moment to thank Robin's Highway Department for the great job. They pulled off this cleaning cleanup weekend. Even though, uh, we had less volunteers than we had prior years, it was still a huge success. And of course, I want to thank all those who volunteered to come out and make it such a success. This is just one of the many reasons why the Woodbury community is so special. All the love and care that people put into keeping one Woodbury beautiful for years to come. Keep up the great work, Woodbury. I'm proud to be called a Woodbarian, whatever you want to call us, but it's a great job. Thank you. Um, have a good night. God bless and stay safe.
Thanks, Jesus. Trustee Burek.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for watching this evening. Um, I want to first start out by congratulating and thanking Sandy Capriglione for her reappointment to the planning board. And for, uh, wanting to step up again. Um, Sandy, your unwavering commitment to serving our community and such an impactful role over the years is both inspirational and admirable. You are someone that many women in this community look up to, and while I know this is a tremendous commitment of your time and energy. I sincerely thank you for everything that you do and for doing it again. Um, I also want to thank Joe DiVino for his many years of dedication to Woodbury, serving on the Z B A. Um, the consistent level of commitment and professionalism he has shown over the years is truly remarkable, and he will be very, very much missed. And I also want to congratulate Evan Yan on his appointment to the Z B A. Um, Evan is a new resident to Woodbury, and I was very impressed with his willingness to step up and volunteer for our community. Um, I think that's really amazing, and I'm happy to see new faces, uh, younger residents getting involved. And, um, I I thank you, Evan, for wanting to make a positive impact here in Woodbury, uh, the place that you've you've put your roots down and call home. Um, the members of the various boards and committees that the village has commit an extraordinary amount of time and energy into their work. Aside from the planning and zoning boards, we also have the combined Complan Land Preservation Committee and the Revitalization Committee. I've been along for the ride with many members of the Land Preservation Committee since September, and I will tell you one thing, we have so many passionate. Talented and dedicated people here in Woodbury, and I am grateful to have many of them. Um, on this committee and to be able to serve alongside them in my capacity as village board liaison. Um, they really have been a breath of fresh air in terms of their vision and their willingness to give to the village so much of their time to make this a better place to live. Trustee Graziano and I have just begun meeting with our combined committees to see which sections of the comprehensive plan have yet to be implemented and which can be tweaked. Um, I very much enjoyed this part of being a member of this village board, and again, want to thank the volunteers who make this possible. Thank you for consistently showing up with new ideas, open minds and endless dedication of your time. It is very much appreciated. Uh, to making everyone happier and just better quality of life here in Woodbury. Um, on a final note, I just want to take a minute as to pause, as we pause our lives and enjoy the holiday weekend. Let us remember why we are able to do so. Please remember to honor those who have fought and gave their lives for the freedoms we so readily enjoy. Thank you to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice and to their families who live with the law, their loss every day. May the memory of those soldiers be a blessing today and always. For those that are able to, please try to attend the Memorial Day Parade on Sunday, down Route thirty two, to remember and honor our heroes. Thank you, everyone. Have a happy, uh, safe holiday weekend and good night.
Thank you, Tara. Trustee Jacomaza.
Uh, Memorial Day is a day unlike any other. Since eighteen sixty eight, we have come together in our communities to place flowers and flags on the graves of those. Who have given their last full measure of devotion to our country. Memorial Day is a time to remember and honor those who have done their duty and never asked for anything in return. Other than to be respected and remembered for the duty, for doing their duty of protecting our freedom on our way of life. In doing so, millions of these soldiers paid the ultimate sacrifice, their life for our freedom. Memorial Day was originally called Decoration Day. It was called Decoration Day because families and friends of the fallen soldiers would come together and decorate the graves of those brave men. With flowers and wreaths. The meaning of Memorial is in memory. With this in mind, we know the true meaning of Memorial Day. To honor and remember all those American soldiers who died defending our freedom, our right to be free. It is the soldier, not the reporter, who has given us the freedom of the press. It is the soldier, not the poet, who has given us, gave us the freedom of speech. It is the soldier, not the politicians, that ensure us our right to life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. It is the soldier who salutes the flag, who serves beneath the flag and whose coffin is draped by the flag. The total deaths of American soldiers who served in major United States wars, including the Revolutionary Civil, World War Ones and Two. The Korean War, the Vietnam War, the Gulf War and the Iraqi and Afghanistan War is more than thirteen, one point three million people. One point three million soldiers lost their lives for our freedoms. Those Americans who died in these wars and more could be mentioned, did their duty for God and country. And we now, we know who they are, and we visit the cemeteries and note the dates of their shortened lives on their headstones. We know their loved ones, their wives and their mothers and their children and the friends who always will miss them. Memorial Day is time to remember and celebrate. Though sadness touches our hearts. Courage and bravery are two Memorial Day traditions that will carry on long after we ourselves are long gone. To the Woodbury veterans who are no longer with us, to honor those who made the ultimate sacrifice. Anthony Tinney, Captain Capriglione, Henry F. Courts the second, Donald Odell. Frank J. Reynolds and Peter Rizachi. Who year in and year out helped Woodbury honor those this country lost, we thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming, and hopefully we can work out the problems with the Facebook Live, but I want to thank those who logged in. And, uh, have a good night and have a good weekend.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Uh, Department heads, that's right.
Yeah, are we on Facebook Live? It says we are.
It's not. I'm not seeing it up.
Oh, because.
Get an alert.
Hmm, sets up on the corner, live on Facebook.
Yeah, I saw I saw the same thing. That's what I've been playing around with. I tried logging out of Facebook and I tried, maybe that, maybe that's the issue because.
I saw you were live, I mean, you mentioned something earlier, I would have taken a look at that.
Yeah.
In any event, I would like to, uh, say that Gary Thomasberger is one of the hardest working and nicest individuals I have had the honor to work with and to know. His dedication to this community is unmatched, and he will be sorely missed. I wish him the best in his retirement. I'd like to also congratulate the dugout for being recognized as Colin Schmidt's Business of the Month, Assemblyman Colin Schmidt. And I'd like to thank the village board for nominating me and Assemblyman Schmidt for presenting me with the Women of Distinction Award on May seventeenth. That's it.
Uh, Mickey, have anything?
Uh, no, Tim, I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Chief Rizzo.
Um, just two things, we're we're back on, uh, normal drill schedule, you know, as I mentioned. Um, you know, everything's going well, and I I just wanted to touch, you know, touch on something that when we were discussing that Turner Road. Um, you know, when when the emergency access gate was put in years ago. It was put in because there wasn't such an overflow of traffic north on thirty two. And where the problem lies is whether it's from the commons or anything else. Or more infrastructure or buildings, residential, commercial that go on Turner Road or in that general, general area. It's going to totally defeat the purpose of the emergency access. And, you know, I understand Chris's point, I understand the plan. Um, and we're not, you know, the way it is now, you know, we have trouble getting to it, but. It the more that goes on down there and the more that goes on in the in the in that intersection. That access road is not accessible to us. You know, just from the overflow of traffic building up north on thirty two, we keep getting pushed back further and further. And, you know, this is where maybe a second, you know, entrance needs to get put in. You know, along the the railroad, you know, coming off of Bond Street behind the hotel, something has got to get done, or you might as well just eliminate that access gate. And then basically you only have, you know, uh, you know, the the normal entrance and exits in and out of the commons that, you know, normal. Uh, vehicles have, but you know, we, it keeps getting pushed back further and further down thirty two and. You know, going back, you know, twenty five years ago, thirty years ago, you know, that was suitable then the way it is now, but the way things are growing, it's. You know, that you need to keep in mind, we need an emergency access route in and out, not just us, P D, EMS, I mean. I'm kind of speaking for all three agencies right now because we all utilize it, so something needs to be done as far as us. Getting in and out of the commons off of Turner Road, if there's going to be a whole change and, you know, new pattern putting in or, you know. If there's gonna be a whole change and, you know, new pattern putting in, or, you know, another building getting put in, you know, even if it stays the same, uh, it's got to get looked into.
I'll tell you what, I'll reach out to Dave Mistrata and, uh, see what we can do about that. Thanks for bringing.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, uh, it's, you know, the Commons did what they had to do back then. I'm not necessarily saying it's, it's, it's on date, but, you know, he's got no control over what goes on.
Very common, and, and he, that would be the place to start to incorporate either into the next project or as a standalone, so. That's what I would have to speak to, so that's what I'll do. Okay.
Okay, yeah, not a problem.
Very good. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Alright, Chief Burke?
Uh, yeah, just one thing, I, I think I could probably speak for Pat too, is, uh, I want to wish Gary Thomasberger a, a really, um, happy and healthy, well-deserved retirement. Uh, he was a, a life member of the Halamos Fire Company and, and, and put many, many years into the Woodbury Fire Department. Uh, and he was a pleasure to work with from our end in terms of building department to fire department. Um, so I just want to thank him, and, and we're gonna miss him, and hopefully we're able to uh, enjoy the same level of cooperation from who, you know, whoever you guys bring on board in the future, so, thank you to him.
Thanks, Chris. Anything else? Okay, Kelly, anything further?
No, just, um, congratulations to Desiree, I saw your picture in the paper.
Again.
That's, I'll save my Gary comments. I'll tell Gary.
Alright, I don't think I missed anybody. Uh, so with that said, with no further business to discuss or comments received, I'll request a motion in a second for your journey.
Make the motion.
I'll say it.
Trustee Graziano with the motion, trustee Eric with the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, everybody, and good night. Have a nice evening. We'll see you guys on the next one.